Eyes for the moment of reflection and pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Here.
Mrs. Hoover?
Here.
Ms. Royce?
I'm here.
Mrs. Bowling?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Gertin?
Here.
Mr. Braden?
Here.
We have all members present this evening. Moving on to amendment of the agenda, we have several. We are adding an appropriations ordinance. That will be M. 4, under introductory readings. Following the amendment of the agenda, we will consider appointing a new clerk of counsel. And we will remove the following committee reports. Item 2, small business. Item 3, finance. Item 4, law and ordinance. So that should leave number 1 and number 5 as the committee reports for this evening. Mrs. Bowling?
I move we amend the agenda as stated.
Is there a second? Mrs. Hoover?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoover. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce, I will vote yes. Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertin?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to the next item is consideration for appointment to clerk of counsel. Mrs. Hoover?
I make a motion that we appoint Kelsey Goins to the position of clerk of counsel.
There is a second. Mrs. Bowling?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Bowling. Any discussion? Mrs. Hoover?
I just want to share that Norwood is so lucky to have Kelsey joining us. I first met her through the Commission on Women and Girls, where she is an alum of that program. She's a Norwood resident. She has a Bachelor of Arts in Urban and Regional Planning, a Master of Arts in Ethical Leadership. She currently works at University of Cincinnati as an adjunct professor. Her resume is vast and her experience is pretty impressive. So I'm very excited that she is interested and able and willing to jump on this fun little show we've got going on here.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yeah, I really appreciate her stepping up and being a person who's willing to be clerk of counsel because it's not it's not an easy job. You have to take minutes. There's a lot of other stuff that goes on behind the scenes. And it really is important to have someone trustworthy and with the skills needed so that we can have a smooth meeting, too.
Further discussion? I will note, I did sit in on the interview process and I fully endorse Ms. Goins in this role. And I will also note, just on a personal note, that serving in that role for, I guess I'll say, a decade, I don't know that I've ever heard of anyone reading minutes for fun. And that was very encouraging. I felt like my work there was validated. Thank you for that. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor by Mrs. Hoover, seconded by Mrs. Bowling, is to appoint Kelsey Goins as clerk of counsel. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce, I will vote yes. Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertin?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Ms. Goins, you can relieve Ms. Royce from her duty. I'll give you a couple seconds before we jump into everything else. All right. So our next item on the agenda is request to address counsel. And we have four of those. The first was submitted online. And that was Mr. Holst. If you can state your name and address, please. And you only have five minutes.
Yes, my name is Carl Holst, 8817 Tulip Wood Court. I am a licensed architect in the state of Ohio and six total states. I sit on local zoning boards, it's like more township. I would like to have a driveway at my property at 4162 Forest Avenue. To get a driveway permit in the city of Norwood, you have to apply for two permits, a zoning permit and a curb cut permit. I have applied for a curb cut permit three times. I have been denied by the safety director all three times without a reason. Front yard driveways are legal in the city of Norwood. Ordinance 1153 dot 20, number D, says in a residential district, parking in the front yards at back shall be permitted on a driveway no greater than 20 feet in width and occupying no more than 25% of the front yards at back. A legal parking space in Norwood is nine feet wide by 19 feet long. My front yard setback is 11 feet and it's measured by Mark Reeves. I have 31 feet and 6 inches in front of my house to the sidewalk and 28 feet 6 inches and 5 eighths from the front yard setback to the house, which I'm not even encroaching upon. The safety director has rejected my curb cut permit without any reason. He said he would give me a reason in an email, and I have the email, after the second rejection, but he has not. Usually a safety director will reject curb cut permits for reasons like there's a utility pool, there's storm drains, there's too close to an intersection, maybe there's a fire hydrant in your yard. None of these situations occur. The way he's rejecting my curb cut permit is actually against the state law. It's the higher revised code 3791 point 04. And I have several copies with me. But basically it says, the state of Ohio, you have 30 days to review a legal application for a permit. And if you reject it, you have to give an adjudication letter that specifies why you're rejecting it. I even contacted the state of Ohio. I turned the city of Norwood into the state of Ohio. And they emailed the law director, the safety director, and the building department. And they said, although we can't enforce local ordinances, they still have to give you an adjudication letter with a reason. You have not. It has been five months. I've applied three times. I would like the city of Norwood to give me a legal adjudication letter rejecting my curb cut permit. I was talking to the mayor. And I'll cut to the chase what's going on here. I spoke into the mayor, spoke into the building department, spoke into the law directors. And I've listened to them. And I listened to you talk about development last meeting and how you're passionate about giving incentives and trying to help people develop and make Norwood a better place. That is all I'm trying to do. And I'm doing it in a legal manner. What's going on is Mark Reeves and the mayor, the mayor was kind enough to stop by my property. They just don't like front yard parking. And I even agree with them to an extent. But the problem is it's legal. And you're breaking the law and how you're rejecting me. So what is the remedy? I'm asking, city council actually has the power and the authority, it's in the Norwood code 305.07, to override the safety director. I don't know if you've ever done that, but the safety director is breaking the law by not giving me a legal adjudication letter. The state of Ohio is aware of this. And I would like this to be resolved in a legal manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next request to address counsel is Cheryl Makepeace.
Cheryl Makepeace, Crown Avenue. And I'm here to discuss Victory Memorial Parking here, am I all right? I was very disappointed last year with the decision that you made concerning Victory Memorial. You really do have a chance to fix that. But I was pleased that you were able to use your skills to him when you had the food truck vendors to the table. That was a good discussion. I'm glad you had that. They had many concerns and ideas. And that needs to happen with our veterans as well. We've honored their request for several years now. And you sort of pushed it to the side last year. Okay, that's enough scolding. About 30 years ago, a gentleman moved to Norwood, his last name was Swango. He was retired military and he was high enough up in rank that he knew who to call. He and our legion were able to procure and place the tank you see there. The quality of life people came to town about four years ago. And they showed us an overhead sketch of Victory Memorial and the tank was not there. You can't let that happen. In 2005, an organization was started called Honor Flight. It's nationwide. They would sponsor a veteran and his escort to go to Washington DC to visit their memorial. Several years ago, a Norwood man, Mr. Romanello, was sponsored and his escort was Victor Schneider. And Mr. Romanello was from World War II and I'm understanding that he was under patent. Norwood veterans are on the list, several other Norwood veterans are on the list to go to their memorial. You can find out more by checking out HonorFlightTriState.org. They have other events in the area. And you can check their website for other ideas. They, let's see. They're the ones who told me that there are several other Norwood vets on the list to visit the memorial. And they also can tell you when the next Honor Flight is leaving and when it's coming back to CVG. And there's usually a lot of people to greet them when they come back from their Honor Flight. Honor Flight Tri-State tells us, there's also a restaurant in Mason called Mission Barbecue. They donate a portion of their sales to Honor Flight Tri-State. And they honor our veterans every day with the National Anthem at noon. And since I'm discussing veterans in military, Lankan Airport welcomes our World War II B-29 bombers to Lankan Airport. This time it's going to be on August 28th for four days they'll be there. There's a small fee to tour. And when I check Grok, it tells me that they can have, that you can pay to have flights. And I'm not sure that's true anymore, but call Lankan Airport close to August 28th to find out the times when they'll be coming in. And that's really all I have to say. And you know what? I came loaded for bear and you people are nice. Okay, so we have HonorFlightTriState.org, find out some more info. Lankan Airport, call them when it gets closer to August 28th to find out what time they're actually coming in. And Mission Barbecue honors our veterans every day at noon and they send donations to Honor Flight Tri-State. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Our next request to address counsel is Bishop Sunny James.
Good evening. First, let me just say that, Kelsey, welcome. We are so pleased to have you. And I am probably the most excited person on all the earth. Because when we've had appointments and positions available, my thing has always been, as many of you know, let's find someone different. Maybe they look different. Because I know we have qualified people that can fill every seat. So it's been a long time coming. But I want to commend Norwood because we are on the move. With that being said, I have my own event, but as you guys know, my first heart is to press for other people. So I do want to say to our dear resident brother Carl, Noah Powers is a good man. And I can assure you personally that if there are some things that have been overlooked by the safety service director, that I can assure you that he will cross every T and dot every I to correct whatever may have been overlooked or just not done. To our dear resident, Ms. Makepeace, I just want to say how excited I am to be in the same room. You're living proof that residents come to me all the time. Bishop, what about this? Bishop, what about that? And I just want to assure you that I am definitely on top of whatever the residents need. With that being said, I want to send a heartfelt condolence to the sheriff that we lost. Here I was at the service and a lot of people mourned the loss of a good man. With that being said, you all know that we are in a very sensitive time right now. And I promise you that I am doing my absolute best to keep the tensions down. I've been in meetings after meetings after meetings with many of my peers who are very angry. And in my last meeting just yesterday, I said, well, listen, we're going to have to do things different because I have even learned, being in Norwood, that I also have to do some things differently. And I can't just always yell and point out what someone else isn't doing if I first don't step up and look at how I'm doing things. So I want to commend all of you in moving this community in the right direction. I'm very, very pleased. Now with my last ending of my time, we have this Sunday, the First Annual Youth and Community Safety Summit. To all of Norwood, please be on notice. There has never been an event like this anywhere in the United States of America. And I have deliberately and intentionally chosen Norwood, Ohio, the greatest city in the country, to have this event. Just earlier today, as I went to see the board, a woman talked to me and she said, Bishop, this is so fitting. I'm on the phone with a parent from Westchester. And the school just found a photo of her stepfather on fire with a note saying that I want my mother dead. Guys, youth are the priority right now. And I need your help. I already have four Cincinnati council members already committed to come. People from the State House committed to come. As you all know, I've unapologetically said that I'm going after million dollar donors, which I've landed my first already. But we have many, many more to go. And I've also vowed not to take one penny for myself. It's all 100% going to be provided to those organizations that are serving our youth. But on this Sunday, from 2:30 to 5:30, I'm asking all of Norwood to come out and to showcase how awesome we are. And to all of you parents or grandparents that have struggling teens and struggling youth, give me a call, 513-487-8843. I also want to say in closing, Chad Edom, who desires to come and be a part of our city, was the first to RSVP. I need all of you to do so. Please do it tonight. I want to see you all Sunday. God bless you all and let's keep making Norwood great. See you Sunday at 2:30.
Thank you. Our final request to address counsel is Robert James III.
Hello, counsel. Robert James, they call me Boom. 3850 Montgomery Road, the owner of Boom Fitness Center, Boom Worldwide. Once again, just saying hey to everybody. No real grievances today. Just wanted to say hey to you guys. I know you guys have been a great supporter of us. We've been in this building for three years, it's my fifth building. And I really appreciate everybody continuing to support. We're looking at hopefully having an event here in Norwood. I would love to have the high school. So anybody who has any contacts, any people we can reach out to to make that happen, I would love it. I would have the mayor giving out one of our custom belts we give out. And yeah, as of January, we are number one in the nation. We even surpassed the national championship. And I would love to keep that in Norwood. I know we've talked about now, John, I appreciate you reaching out about maybe Centaun Center. And that's cool, but I really would love the Norwood High School. Obviously, being a national champion myself, you know, obviously I won my titles in boxing, did all that stuff. When I came back now, I vowed to, like my father was speaking about, about the youth, 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 youth. And now this is not Boom Belt Battle 1, 2, 3, 5. This is now Boom Belt Battle 15. And I've now owned Boom for 18 years. And I've done one heck of a job, me and my team, the gym manager of my gym, Ms. Tiffany Williams, we call her the boss lady. A lot of you guys already know her. And me and my staff have done an incredible job of really building this brand, the Boom brand. And we're trying to be a blessing. And I think we've finally sucked our teeth into being literally number one in the nation now. And I know my father has also been pushing hard for us to stay here in Norwood, but I need the venues. And I think Norwood High School could be a great venue for it. And then we obviously, you know, want to go down to Shea Stadium and different things, but I want to keep it in Norwood. And right now I've been finding roadblocks. And I don't know, maybe I've not contacted the right people or right people contacting me back. I don't know, but I would love to keep it here in Norwood and give these young people an opportunity. Everybody knows my gym right down the street, again, on Montgomery Road, it's 3850 Montgomery Road. And we start three years old and up. Actually, Ms. Williams is the two-time national champion. She's got back from Lafayette, Louisiana, won her second national title, so give her a big round of applause. But I think she's retiring, so don't expect her in the Boom Belt Battle. She might be done. But I really want to give the next wave of our youth that next opportunity. And again, we give out all custom belts, Showtime Boxing, if you guys are familiar, we bought all their big lighting truss and lights cash. We own it all. So anywhere we go, we can set up shop and really give something that's extraordinary to the city. And I just need the help. So if you've got any contacts, anybody can reach out to them. Again, my number is 513-456-1993. Again, that's 513-456-1993. Or you can reach out on any social media platform at Boom underscore Worldwide. Again, that's Boom Worldwide on all platforms. And again, Ms. Williams, she's gonna try to reach out to everyone who hits us up. And we definitely appreciate all the support. And thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to reports of standing committees of counsel. The first is a law ordinance, human resources and compliance from April 15th.
To the Honorable Counsel of the City of Norwood, we, your Committee of Law, Ordinance, Human Resources and Compliance, to whom was referred, one, an ordinance amending the Norwood Public Records Policy, two, backyard permeability, three, community resources for immigrants and refugees, and four, cash to crypto ATMs in Norwood, beg leave to submit the following report. The committee is reporting back out the ordinance amending the Norwood Public Records Policy to City Council, which was on the agenda last time. Discuss backyard permeability, community resources for immigrants and refugees, and the possibility of regulating cash to crypto ATMs in Norwood. Respectfully submitted, Ms. Alexis Royce, chairperson, Mrs. Sam Bowling, Mr. Jeff Gertin, and Mrs. Susan Haber.
Thank you. Mr. Gertin?
Make a motion to receive and file.
Motion to accept the report? All right, that'll work, too. Mrs. Bowling?
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Mrs. Bowling. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gertin?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Our next item is the DEI Advisory Board Report from May the 7th.
Thank you. To the Honorable Counsel of the City of Norwood, Ohio, we, your Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Advisory Board, to whom was referred the advice and support for the city's work to become more diverse, equitable, inclusive through its policies, practices and programs, beg leave to submit the following report. The board reviewed a presentation that gave an overview of Norwood DEI Board and its accomplishments. There is a discussion of board recruitment, including challenges for city employees to be involved. Susan Hoover will create a social media page to recruit both board members as well as volunteers for specific events. Alexis Royce will purchase Know Your Rights red cards for distribution. Alexis Royce and Susan Hoover shared the current Pride Month planning, which is being coordinated by Councilwoman Bowling. Pride Market will be June 1 with plans to do a slow roll and chalking event. Michael Gabbert, Norwood Rec, is interested in supporting. There was a discussion about hopes to plan a Hispanic Heritage Festival again this year, which would be the next big event on the calendar. There were no community comments. Respectfully submitted, Susan Hoover, Ms. Alexis Royce, Ms. Ashton Tucker, and Ms. Stephanie Barker.
Thank you. Mrs. Bowling?
I move we accept the committee report.
Motion by Mrs. Bowling to accept the report. Ms. Royce?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Royce. Any discussion? Mrs. Hoover?
I did have this slideshow presentation from the DEI Committee that we discussed sharing at council. Question of order, would that be appropriate to do at this moment? Would it take maybe five minutes? Or could you do it under your old business?
We can do either.
Let's knock it. Can you get it up on the screen? If I can find it somewhere. This one? Yeah, yes. Of course, that TV is off.
I tried.
Perfect, thank you. We can just scroll through this pretty quickly. The DEI Advisory Board was created in 2022. Next slide. The board members are two city council members, two city employees, they're currently at vacancies, and three city residents. They currently have one vacancy. This is what happens if you don't send me a picture. I use Facebook. The current council members are myself and Alexis Royce. We currently do not have any city employees. Your face could be there. And we have two current residents, one current opening. Board programming. The board has had two Hispanic Heritage Festivals. They were pretty phenomenal. I remember, Bobby remembers dancing in the I remember if Bobby remembers dancing in the middle of Mills Avenue is a really phenomenal event. We're hoping to do that again this year. The MLK Day of Service, we've had four years of creating volunteer opportunities in Norwood. And we have done two blood drives. And that is my very first donation of blood. I was very excited about that. So we're going to see that. You're welcome. Marsh Park, the marker for Marsh Park is currently at the Foundry. We did the daffodil planting of over 1,700 daffodils to acknowledge the over 1,700 signatures that were on the petitions to push blacks out of Norwood back in 1923. So it's part of the acknowledgement of that history. We also had Pride Month. We've done that the last couple of years. I kind of want Sam to talk about the last one.
Sure. Last year for Pride Month, we threw the first, which is now an annual Pride Market on Mills Avenue, just next to Victory Park. And we had performances and story hour, and that incredible dog was there. That looks like a stock photo. That dog was there. That was wild. We had the resolution reading at City Hall and then marched over to the park and had a lovely day of celebration and supporting small businesses. Our first Pride celebration was in 2021 and was a walk on Wasn Way, which we are recreating this year, hopefully without the rain. Yeah, it's been wonderful. I'm excited to see it grow.
Thank you. The next one is the Norwood Mound. We are still working on the historical marker with Historical Society. One of the reasons it's taking a bit longer is it's really important that we are connecting with the trods who have ancestral connection to that mound. And that just, there's many communities, and so it just takes a little bit longer. We are in connection with not only local archaeologists, but also the tribal historic preservation officers. So that's some really impressive work we're doing, I think. And we have the History Month. Do you want to do that one? Oh, yeah.
For Women's History Month, the DEI Board and just the community in general, honestly. I had the idea to do a donation drive for Lydia's House the first year I was on the DEI Board. It's been great to do every year. If you're not familiar with Lydia's House, they provide transitional housing here in Norwood for women and children who need it. And frankly, they're on my street. They do great work. The residents there are wonderful people. And it's a great organization. So we collect donations every year, and I go and drop them off, and it's always a lovely afternoon.
Thank you. The next is the Driving the Green Book collaboration that was done with the Norwood Library, the North Historical Society, and Harriet Beecher Stowe House. We did a panel discussion, we did tours of the Freedom Center, and there was a book reading. That program was so well-received that we are going to, this collection of folks will be presenting it at an upcoming historical conference in Cincinnati, which I'd forgotten the name of, and I thought I was going to look it up, and I forgot. So as you saw, we do have openings on the Board, but some people feel like that is too big of a commitment, so we have made it options for people to just volunteer for events that you might be particularly interested in. Had some beautiful responses. Over 10 people are interested in being on the Board, 20 people interested in volunteering for lots of other things. So you can click on the QR code there if you're at home and get to the signup sheet, and we will get you more information if you would like. And that is it. Thank you, ma'am.
Any other discussion? All right. Not current motion on the floor by Mrs. Bowling, seconded by Ms. Royce, is to accept the report. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen.
Here.
Yes, yes. Sorry. Franzen. Sorry. Mrs. Hoover.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Gertin.
Yes.
And Mr. Braden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, we're here, and the motion carries. Moving on to third readings of ordinances and resolutions. A resolution adopting the City of Norwood Treasurer's amended statement of investment policy. Mrs. Franzen.
I move we have the third reading of this ordinance.
Motion by Mrs. Franzen to have the third reading of the resolution. Is there a second? Mrs. Hoover.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoover. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen. Yes.
Mrs. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Royce.
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Gertin.
Yes.
And Mr. Braden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have the third reading of the resolution.
Resolution adopting the City of Norwood Treasurer's amended statement of investment policy.
Thank you. Mrs. Franzen.
I move we pass the resolution.
Motion by Mrs. Franzen to pass the resolution. Mrs. Bowling.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Bowling. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen. Yes.
Mrs. Hoover.
Yes.
Mrs. Royce.
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Gertin.
Yes.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to the next item, that is second reading of ordinances and resolutions. This is an ordinance amending the Norwood Public Records Policy adopted by Ordinance Mrs. Hoover.
I move we have the second reading of the ordinance.
Motion by Mrs. Hoover to have the second reading of the ordinance. Mr. Gertin.
I second the motion.
Seconded by Mr. Gertin. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Royce.
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Gertin.
Yes.
And Mr. Braden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have the second reading of the ordinance.
Ordinance amending the Norwood Public Records Policy adopted by Ordinance 52-2020.
Thank you. And moving on to introductory readings of ordinances and resolutions. The first is an ordinance amending Sections 6.01 and 6.02 of the Personnel Policy and Procedure Manual of the City of Norwood, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Mr. Gertin.
I make a motion to suspend the rules and have all three readings.
Motion by Mr. Gertin to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the ordinance. Mrs. Franzen.
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Franzen. Any discussion? Mrs. Hoover.
Apologies, I lost on the page. Which, is this the?
Page 28.
Okay. Sorry, I was thinking there wasn't an emergency clause, and I was confused. Got it. All right, thank you.
Mr. Gertin.
Speaking to Ms. Zombek earlier, we're just updating the policy to get it into a rational, normal, contemporary, is the word I'm looking for, stating it rational, a contemporary status to be more applicable.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mrs. Franzen.
Yep, just for people wondering what we're updating, it's mostly just reimbursing expenses, travel, updating the guidebook to be, yeah, contemporary, like Mr. Gertin says. I apologize for being distracted earlier. Also, I lost my agenda, so I was trying to find it, and then, yeah, so, anyway, I'm paying attention.
Any further discussion? All right. Motion on the floor by Mr. Gertin, seconded by Mrs. Franzen, is to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Royce.
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Gertin.
Yes.
And Mr. Braden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have all three readings of the ordinance.
Ordinance amending Sections 6.01 and 6.02 of the Personnel Policy and Procedure Manual of the City of Norwood, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance amending Sections 6.01 and 6.02 of the Personnel Policy and Procedure Manual of the City of Norwood, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance amending Sections 6.01 and 6.02 of the Personnel Policy and Procedure Manual of the City of Norwood, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. There are motion to pass the ordinance. Mr. Gertin.
Make a motion to pass the ordinance.
Ms. Royce.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Royce. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Royce.
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Gertin.
Yes.
And Mr. Braden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to the next item. This is a resolution authorizing the city auditor to approve a then and now certificate from the Streets Fund 1001-0852-57200 to pay the outstanding invoice for services already rendered by Capital Electric and declaring an emergency. Mrs. Bowling.
I move we suspend the rules and have all three readings of the ordinance. Resolution.
Motion by Mrs. Bowling to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the resolution. Mrs. Hoover.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoover. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Royce.
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Gertin.
Yes.
And Mr. Braden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have all three readings of the resolution.
Resolution authorizing the city auditor to approve a then and now certificate from the Streets Fund 1001-0852-57200 to pay the outstanding invoice for services already rendered by Capital Electric and declaring an emergency. Resolution authorizing the city auditor to approve a then and now certificate from the Streets Fund 1001-0852-57200 to pay the outstanding invoice for services already rendered by Capital Electric and declaring an emergency. Resolution authorizing the city auditor to approve a then and now certificate from the Streets Fund 1001-0852-57200 to pay the outstanding invoice for services already rendered by Capital Electric and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mrs. Bowling.
I move we pass the resolution.
Motion by Mrs. Bowling to pass the resolution. Mrs. Hoover.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoover. Any discussion? Mr. Moore.
Would it be okay to invite Mr. Powers up to just comment briefly on this?
Good evening. Happy to answer any specific questions, but this is related to some additional work that had to be done on the State Route 561 project.
Got it. Yeah, I think the question would just be the, sort of, the fact that it seemed to be an electric company, but it's a street fund. Could you just kind of connect those dots?
Yeah, so this has basically to do with a street light. So one of the loops was cut as we did part of this project, so it was emergency repairs to get that street light working correctly.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions?
Thank you all.
Thank you. The motion on the floor by Mrs. Bowling, seconded by Mrs. Hoover, is to pass the resolution. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Royce.
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Gertin.
Yes.
And Mr. Braden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Next item is a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to apply for funds through the Metro Transit Infrastructure Fund to reconstruct Wire Avenue from Montgomery to Allison, and further authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into any necessary agreements to receive those funds and declaring an emergency. Mrs. Franzen.
I move that we suspend the rules and have all three readings.
Motion by Mrs. Franzen to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the resolution. Mrs. Hoover.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoover. Any discussion? Mrs. Hoover.
Would like to invite Mr. Powers to come back up. If you could share with folks at home about the grant process and what exactly this will be for, for the Montgomery Road.
So this grant is tied to, sort of, so this is kind of the one that we had the big countywide vote on a few years ago, provides funds for not just the bus service, but funds to improve infrastructure throughout the county. So it is a competitive process limited to Hamilton County, so these are all local county dollars. These are the same funds that we've applied to for some projects in the past. They're supporting the urban paving project here on Montgomery Road, pedestrian safety project. They've supported lots of different projects throughout the county. So we do have to have this resolution to support this, and then the application goes in by the end of this month. They typically will let folks know October, November timeframe for anybody who is awarded.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any further questions? All right. Motion on the floor by Mrs. Franzen, seconded by Mrs. Hoover, is to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the resolution. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Royce.
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Gertin.
Yes.
And Mr. Braden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have all three readings of the resolution.
A resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to apply for funds through the Metro Transit Infrastructure Fund to reconstruct Wire Avenue from Montgomery to Allison, and further authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into any necessary agreements to receive those funds and declaring an emergency. A resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to apply for funds through the Metro Transit Infrastructure Fund to reconstruct Wire Avenue from Montgomery to Allison and further authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into any necessary agreements to receive those funds and declaring an emergency. A resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to apply for funds through the Metro Transit Infrastructure Fund to reconstruct Wire Avenue from Montgomery to Allison and further authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into any necessary agreements to receive those funds and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Braden?
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to pass the resolution.
Motion by Mr. Braden to pass the resolution. Mrs. Franzen?
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Franzen. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Next item is an ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2025 and declaring an emergency. Mr. Gerton?
Make a motion and have all three readings.
Motion by Mr. Gerton to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the ordinance. Is there a second? Mrs. Franzen?
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Franzen. Any discussion? Mr. Gerton?
To the auditor, through the president, am I correct in understanding that this document is mainly to correct our current appropriations with the FRP that we just passed?
Mr. Miracle?
Thank you, Mr. President. Your correct, Mr. Gerton. What we're doing is, Mary Jaeger, our deputy auditor, did a very nice detailed report here of what the fund balance was prior and then what the FRP is, and then the appropriate changes made there. And then what happens next is we get a certified copy of the ordinance, and then we send this to the Hamilton County Auditor. We have to have it to them by next Monday. It's next week. We'll approve that, and then we'll have the new certificate of estimate.
Thanks, sir.
Any further questions? All right. Motion on the floor by Mr. Gerton, seconded by Mrs. Franzen, is to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
And Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have all three readings of the ordinance.
Ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2025 and declaring an emergency. Ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2025 and declaring an emergency. Ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2025 and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Braden?
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to pass the ordinance, please.
Motion by Mr. Braden to pass the ordinance. Mr. Gerton?
Second the motion.
Seconded by Mr. Gerton. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
And Mr. Braden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to administration reports. Mayor Schneider?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for hiring a new clerk of counsel that speaks loudly and clearly. There were times previously where I couldn't even hear, and I'm sitting this close. It's great having you here, and we're pleased to have you sitting here up here with us. Couple of things I'd like to talk about. It was mentioned that Dan Romanello was a member of Patton's Third Army and was a person that I was lucky enough to do the honor flight with. But Dan Romanello sat in your seats down here. So Dan Romanello was a city council member. Had a large family. I had pushed and begged him to let me go as his escort on the honor flight. The escorts have to pay for their own flight, which was my privilege. When he said he would go, I was so ecstatic. And it was a great day. We really had a great day that day. So the honor flight was an interesting part. We talked about the B-21, or she talked about the B-29 bombers, Super Fortress. I think there's only two or three. There's just a small amount of them that are flying around the United States these days. And we're lucky enough, we live in Norwood, so we're so close to Lumpkin. If you're out and about that weekend, you will see them flying around doing some of those trips. I suspect they will do the same thing. Then Memorial Day is coming up. I was asked to give my reflections about Memorial Day, which I've been able to do, and really honored to be invited by the veterans. They do a nice program on Monday, May 26. It's really from 11 until 12. The fire department chief, I'll make sure you know, the fire department will be there. They typically take the flag down and put it at half mast. Right, chief, all those guys will be there, unless they're on a run. We've had troubles with that before. So no fires in Norwood on Memorial Day around lunchtime, okay? So a couple of good things going on. We are still working to purchase the rail line. You'll notice that up here at Wasson Way and Montgomery Road, the pedestrian crossing is now active. So if they hit that pedestrian crossing, it's stopping cars and letting pedestrians go by. And it's timed. We'll see. It should work out fine unless there's a syntax game going on or something. Sometimes it does get a mess up there. We've got a blip in our resurfacing project on Montgomery Road. Got some information from ODOT, and it looks like the right hand doesn't really know what the left hand is doing. And so the Safety Service Director and the superintendent are working to get that fixed. Strangely enough, they want to pave a lot quicker than what we want them to pave, which is abnormal, right? Most municipalities are like begging, "Please pave my road today." But we've got some pedestrian safety improvements that we want to get in place. So we're going to be working to try to make sure that's corrected. Last hurdles on the Elm Avenue project, but groundbreaking, we're hoping should take place maybe late in May. I don't think it'll be late in May. It'll probably be more like June. But we've got some hurdles there to take care of. But those are really the things that are going on right now. So really, you know, think of that. Show up on Memorial Day. It's a nice service they do. There's typically about, I'll say, 75 to 100 people that show up. It's not a long service. So get out of the swim pool and come over to that and show some respect, and then go back. So that's about all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mayor Schneider? Mr. Moore?
I'm not sure if I caught you say the location for that event on Memorial Day.
Memorial Day, the event is held at Victory Park.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll have the flag. The flag will be lowered at noon. Typically, the 11th minute of the 11th hour, we take a minute to think about all that was known in the 11th month, you know, when World War I was going on. So, but it is at Victory Park. It's Memorial Day. It's from 11 until 12 noon. I think there's going to be, actually, as you say that, I apologize to ramble there, there will be a member who ran on a very recent honor flight that will talk a little bit about his experience doing that. And, you know, it was a pretty impressive, cool day. It's a long day. You get up early in the morning, and then you don't get back until a little bit later in the evening. But it was a really neat. If you know a veteran that's capable of doing that and you're willing to do it, you will not forget it. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mayor Schneider? Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, really quick, we're working on hiring people. It's a big thing right now. So challenges, even when you think you have people, that they're going to be coming, things happen, and they don't come. So we are still looking for tax clerks. So I think the role will be posted tomorrow. There's a couple of people under consideration, but we're looking for more candidates. So would be love for you all to share that and apply once it gets posted on the city's website. Or you can apply and share it. It really is what we'd like to do. So I think you all are great on city councils, so I'm going to give that up to work for the city. The other thing is, yeah, I mean, that's pretty much it. We're going full steam ahead in the office. We're still generating interest for the city, which we always love to see. But yeah, all I got.
Any questions for Mr. Bonzal? All right. Mr. Miracle?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm pleased to report the city's Record Retention Commission meeting was held on May the 6. The auditor's office retention schedule has been approved by the commission. It will be forwarded to the Ohio History Connection, followed by the Auditor of State's office for their approvals. My understanding, this could take up to two months. We're hoping that we can improve on that timeline. Also, the 2026 tax budget is due July 18, 2025. The packet from the Hamilton County Auditor's office was forwarded to the Finance Committee members on May the 9. So we will meet with Mr. Gerton and Mrs. Franzen and begin work on that. Also, we have the Law Department is currently reviewing a pay loss agreement. So we're waiting for Mr. Gary. He was reading it today. Thank you. Also, we have a purchasing card manual, which is being drafted for the first time in order to facilitate a more efficient way of procuring goods and services. The city currently has one credit card, and it's very, very limited use. Also, Mary Jaeger attended the National Government Finance Officers Association Accounting Academy and the Rural Community Assistance Partnership Fiscal Officer Utility Bootcamp. Mary applied for and was awarded a $2,400 scholarship toward work towards becoming a certified public finance officer through the National Government Finance Officers Association, and that will fully fund her two-year endeavor with this. So thank you, Mary, for doing that. So no cost to Norwood residents for that. And also, the Norwood Board of Health is undergoing a desk review of their workforce grant, and our office is assisting with gathering the financial information requested by the Ohio Department of Health. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Miracle? Mr. Moore?
I'm excited about your meeting today.
Any questions for Mr. Moore? All right. Then we will move on to unfinished business. Mrs. Franzen?
Hi. So Mrs. Hoover put an infrastructure committee thing in for a street plan, the capital improvement plan that the city is working on to better guide how we fix the streets. And I talked to Mr. Skelly today. They really just got the letters of intent from the people that might be upgrading the streets. So because that took a little while, I was going to try to do an infrastructure meeting next week on Thursday. I wanted to see if Mr. Moore, Mrs. Bowling, and Ms. Royce would be available at 6:30 on that day. And if not, I can figure out a different day.
You said Thursday?
Thursday, the 29th. Yes, 29th. Because next week I will be out of town.
This is a very weird reason to not be available, but there is a chance that I'm delivering the game ball at FC. So I might not be available, maybe.
Ms. Royce? Mr. Moore? I am available. Available? Okay. We'll go ahead and tentatively schedule it. It'll be kind of a brief meeting. And my intent is, after we have more information, to do, like actively advertise a meeting sometime in June to talk about what the city is doing to try to get the streets maintained and have a plan going forward for the next seven to 10 years. So this is just kind of the initial meeting to talk about what the city needs to do to get there and kind of figure out how we can best communicate with the rest of the city. So two weeks from now-ish, the 29th here, City Hall, 6:30. I will send out an agenda ASAP. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other unfinished business? Mrs. Hoover?
Thank you. I appreciate you.
Just add the other file.
That would be the other file, so thank you. I didn't have a fun graphic. What happened to my?
Really, that is...
That is really rude.
Unfinished D-business.
Okay, it was not like that. It's not like that on mine. And that's not the right color blue. On your desk, you, sir.
Oh, yes, just a reminder. The community survey, I believe there should be a sign in almost all of the Norwood parks that you can scan. So if you are visiting a park, get your phone out, turn on the camera, scan the QR code, and it will take you directly to the community survey.
Thank you. I like putting this up just because we were talking about a lot of information that you can also get from some of these locations. Facebook, the C Click Fix, our website, Norwood Television, social media. So take a look at those. This last weekend was the citywide yard sale. I think it was last year that this council made it an ongoing, so we don't have to schedule it every year, and we also added on Sundays. When we were first having that conversation, we were aware that that Sunday in May is Mother's Day. And we had a smallish conversation. No one seemed to have feelings one way or the other. And it seemed like some people in the community might have preferred it not be on Mother's Day. So this was a decision that was made, and we can change it. So the reason why is the Sunday was the ad. And so that's why it falls on that Sunday. So lots of people seem to love it on Sunday, on Mother's Day. But if you don't, please feel free to reach out. And if we have enough people wanting to move it, then we can easily move it. But just know that that's why it's on Mother's Day. And that's all the unfinished I have, sir. Thank you.
All right. Any other unfinished business? All right. Moving on to new D-business.
Go to the next slide, please.
I'll take this one. So Tower Park, because of some grant funds thanks to the Norwood Diversity Equity and Inclusion Board.
Norwood Together did the grant.
Oh, Norwood Together did the grant.
Yes, sir.
Also, with some grant funds from Jim of the Highlands and then a private donation, we're getting the surface completely redone and then the fence re-put up around the Tower Park. So we need a little bit of help. We need a little bit of help on May this Saturday in the morning. And we're going to be doing a little weaving and scrubbing the surface so that we can get the new asphalt on top of that. Come and join me.
Sure. So our Pride celebrations are getting scheduled for this year. We've decided to expand it throughout the month instead of just one Pride Market. The Pride Market will happen again on Sunday, June 1, with a variety of small businesses and some great resources who will be tabling. I believe the library will be there, which will be great, and many other organizations. On Sunday, June 8, we are getting a Pride Ride Slow Roll Bike Ride organized throughout the city, where people can decorate their bikes, little pride flags on there, make them light up, showy, fun things like that. And then Sunday, June 22, we're going to recreate the Wasson Way Chalk Walk that we did a few years ago and just chalk messages of love and support all over Wasson Way as far as people feel like walking. And hopefully, it doesn't storm, so we walk a little further this year. Sunday, June 29, we are planning a book club meeting. We will announce that book by the first so that everyone has almost the full month to read the book. read the book. And if you do not read the full book, that's okay, you should come anyway. Yeah, I hope to see folks at some of those events.
Just putting up the QR code again for folks who might be interested in either sending a letter of interest about the board or volunteering for an event. There's the QR code again. My next thing is the yard waste bag. This is a really great way that we can help save Norwood money as well as the environment. I love the win-win-wins. You can get free yard waste bags from the Board of Health, and then fill them with your yard waste and put them on the curb. They are picked up by a separate rumpkey truck, and they take them, and they are composted. I'm also in conversations with Carolyn, with the Board of Health and Hamilton County Resource, to try to make Norwood a target community, which would give us additional access to grant funding and support for us to increase our recycling, which, if you recall, that helps us, that reduces the cost that we pay for garbage. So it's a double whammy. The next thing I wanted to share was mobile crisis. There's been a lot of conversation about mental health challenges. No one knows that more than I. I'm a mental health therapist for over 30 years, and I've never been more busy in my life. Part of the reason I want to be on council is because of what I was seeing in my office. Mobile crisis is a really phenomenal program that we have in this area. It, when someone's having a mental health crisis, you can call this number, it's, they're connected with UC Hospital, and they send out not only law enforcement, but they also send out a medical person, usually it's a nurse or a social worker or a therapist. I've actually done these runs before when I was a wee baby student, and this program literally saves lives. It puts the right people in the right spaces, it helps protect our officers, it helps protect our residents. So just wanted to share that. Also wanted to share that Norwood Schools does have a mental health therapist in every building, which is pretty phenomenal. That was not the case when I was a student, and certainly not when my kids were students. So that there are a lot of resources. We also have several really good mental health agencies here in Norwood, including Child Focus. So know that there are a lot of resources out there for folks. And then finally, I just threw this on because I just got the email before I came here. Norwood Day Parade. I think everyone knows now, we've changed the date, not we, the Chamber of Commerce has changed the date to now be on a Friday. So it'll be Friday, July the 18th. And if you would like to have your float in the parade, they have civic, church, nonprofit, they have business entries. It is just one of the most magical days in Norwood, where the kids lie in the streets and there's candy and bubbles, and it's lovely. So put it on your calendar for Friday, July the 18th. This year, after the parade, there will be an after-party, I understand, in the park? Am I remembering that correctly? Anyone? Oh, the siteery, okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other new business? Mr. Brayden.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just real quick, on the way in, I noticed our fire department was called out to Hunter Avenue, so I just want to take this time to say a prayer for our firemen and our residents, and I hope everybody's safe, and I just wanted to shout that out. Also, I wanted to invite everybody, I've written an article in from 1989, Norwood rebuilding ourselves after General Motors closed down, and I just happened to be on the front page of the article. So, just interesting comment, somebody recognized my father's name, and they pulled a metal printing press sheet, and that's what that is right there. So feel free to take a look at it. So I just want to share that. Thanks. You might want to put that in your office, sir.
Any other new business? I will add, to piggyback on the yard waste bags, just a reminder for those cutting the grass or having someone else cut your grass, that the grass clippings should be put in the bag or mulched in with your grass and not blown out onto the street or the curb. Just a friendly reminder. All right, moving on to communications. The first is a letter from Mr. Miracle regarding the EOM report letters. Yep.
Honorable Joe S. Gears, Honorable City Council, pursuit to the recommendation of the Auditor of State in the report on accounting methods. Each month upon the completion of the financial report, copies of their reports have been sent via email to all department heads and elected officials for their review. Each month, a receipt of such reports shall be recorded in the minutes of City Council. The following reports have been provided audit, trial, by account, bank report, encumbrance report, expense audit, trial, expense report for the current year, expense report, expense report with encumbrance detail, revenue audit, trial, revenue report, and the statement of cash. Respectfully, Ken Miracle, City Auditor.
Mrs. Franzen.
I move that we receive and file the report, or the letter.
Motion to receive and file the letter. Mrs. Bowling.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Bowling. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Mrs. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to the next item is a letter from Mr. Moore regarding a request for executive session.
Norwood City Council, 4645 Montgomery Road, Norwood, Ohio, 45212. Executive session request for May 13th, 2025. Dear President and members of council, I am requesting that the council go into executive session at your meeting on May 13th, 2025 for the following purpose. To discuss disputes that are the subject of pending or imminent court action, please place this matter at the end of the agenda. Sincerely, P. D. Moore, Norwood Law Director.
Mrs. Franzen.
I move that we receive and file the letter and go into executive section pursuant to the causes outlined by Mr. Moore.
Thank you. Is there a... Mrs. Bowling. Seconded by Mrs. Bowling. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Mrs. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. At this moment, we will go ahead and ask everyone who is not a city official to please leave council chambers as we enter executive session. And once executive session is complete, we will let everyone outside know, and if we want to make sure that the cameras and microphones are turned off as well. Thank you.
Counsel has returned from executive session. Mrs. Franzen.
I want to make a motion to amend the agenda to add the ordinance. Do we need to read the entire thing?
Yes, please.
Yes, the ordinance to authorize settlement of lawsuits against the city of Norwood, filed on behalf of Tina L. Costanzo, Reed 2507 Mound View Drive, and declaring an emergency. So amend the agenda to add that ordinance.
Thank you. Mrs. Bowling.
I'd like to second that.
Seconded by Mrs. Bowling. Any discussion? Motion on the floor by Mrs. Franzen, seconded by Mrs. Bowling, is to amend the agenda to add an ordinance to authorize a settlement of lawsuits against the city of Norwood filed on behalf of Tina L. Costanzo. L. Costanzo regarding 2507 Mound View Drive and declaring an emergency. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Royce.
Yes.
Mrs. Bowing.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Gerton.
Yes.
And Mr. Braden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. At this time, we will consider the ordinance to authorize a settlement of lawsuits against the City of Norwood filed on behalf of Tina L. Costanzo regarding 2507 Mound View Drive and declaring an emergency. Mrs. Bowing.
I move we suspend the rules and have all three readings.
Motion by Mrs. Bowing to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the ordinance. Is there a second? Mrs. Hoover.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoover. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Royce.
Yes.
Mrs. Bowing.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Gerton.
Yes.
And Mr. Braden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have all three readings of the ordinance.
Ordinance to authorize settlement of lawsuits against the City of Norwood filed on behalf of Tina L. Costanzo RE 2507 Mound View Drive and declaring an emergency. Ordinance to authorize settlement of lawsuits against the City of Norwood filed on behalf of Tina L. Costanzo RE 2507 Mound View Drive and declaring an emergency. Ordinance to authorize settlement of lawsuits against the City of Norwood filed on behalf of Tina L. Costanzo RE 2507 Mound View Drive and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mrs. Bowing.
I move we pass the ordinance.
Motion by Mrs. Bowing to pass the ordinance. Mrs. Franzen.
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Franzen. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Royce.
Yes.
Mrs. Bowing.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Gerton.
Yes.
And Mr. Braden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. We have no absent members. Mrs. Bowing.
I move that we adjourn.
Motion by Mrs. Bowing to adjourn. Is there a second? Mr. Moore.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Moore. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Royce.
Yes.
Mrs. Bowing.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Gerton.
Yes.
And Mr. Braden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. This meeting is hereby adjourned.